I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 16th County Commission meeting. I would ask you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with that. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
There is.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission minutes from August 9th, 2016. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,477,983.46. Is there a motion?
Hey, the bills.
Second.
Motion, any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, you know, without getting too specific, they mainly are highway bills and medical at the jail.
I have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is auditor's account with the treasurer, county treasurer as of July 31st, 2016, and the Manyaha County Juvenile Detention Center report for July 2016. And those are filed at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is notice from the South Dakota Department of Health for disinterment permits issued for the remains of Anthony Cruz, Hills of Rest Memorial Park, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPNO number 59863 in the amount of $11,141.92. Robert Wilson, good morning.
Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. This applicant has submitted a compromise lien application for DPNO 59863 in the amount of $11,171.92. The lien is recorded both in the name of the applicant and the applicant's ex-spouse. He was in the process of closing on the purchase of a home when the title company discovered the lien and required that it be resolved prior to closing. Closing was originally scheduled for this coming Thursday. I've been told that he visited with our office staff just a little earlier this morning and it may be delayed, but it was originally scheduled for this week. The applicant states he was unaware that the assistance had been provided, that it had been provided to his now ex-wife after the time they were separated, but prior to the time that they were legally divorced. Supporting documents provided by the Human Services Office confirm that indeed, all the services were provided to the ex-spouse. And we can confirm as well that all of the liens were recorded after the time, after the legal divorce. So it was, is a bit of an interesting case where services were provided prior to divorce. All liens were recorded after the divorce. The applicant is requesting that his name be removed from this DPNO with no payment and that the amount remains in full, only in his ex-wife's name. We've provided the lien application summary sheet and the divorce decree and would stand by for your questions. I believe the applicant is here and may wish to speak with you as well.
Is there any questions for Robert at this time? If the applicant is here, if you would like to speak, you can stand where you are and, or you can sit and you don't have to give your name or anything. Does anybody want to speak? No. Okay, so back to the Commission.
I have a question.
Comments or motion? Commissioner Barth?
So, Robert, is this, did they then postpone the closing because of this or?
And again, I'm hearing this secondhand. I understand that the applicant was here earlier today and visited with Melinda in our office. It's my understanding that it is rescheduled later in the month. Still on, but rescheduled to a later date.
Thank you.
Is there a motion or initial comments? Commissioner Bender?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to remove the liens from the applicant and leave them solely on the ex-spouse. I mean, I think this is a situation where we just need to be ever vigilant in getting these liens recorded as promptly as possible. But I think under the circumstances, the way the facts look out, we don't really have a choice here but to do this.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Bender?
I'll second it, but I have a question. Do we have any idea how long it usually takes us to process this paperwork after the legal documents have been filed? Because that seems to be the crux of the problem.
I can take that question, actually. I think it depends on the procedure set up by the particular department as to how quickly they come over. It depends on the type of claim it is to. I'll use an example as the hospital claims that we get. Sometimes there's some question out there as to who is responsible and of course, for a particular bill based on statutory requirements. And as that's worked out, sometimes between the time the services are provided at the hospital to the time where we figure out who is actually legally responsible, there can be a delay of some months. Those type of delays are unavoidable. What we want to try to avoid is departments having these figures in their possession and not sending them over, you know, promptly to be recorded with the register of deeds and through the auditor's office. So, in this case, I don't know if there was much of a real delay occasioned by anything dilatory here, but I think we do need to be vigilant about that because the date of recording is when it's a legal claim against the person, so.
And that we can't send it over for recording until the bill's been paid. So you get a hospital bill and it hasn't been paid because, exactly like Kirsten said, so there's going to take time.
Sometimes it's unavoidable, but, you know, be vigilant, I would advise, so.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Carol, maybe you can answer this. If it can't be recorded until it's paid, what if we're disputing the bill from the hospital?
It still can't be leaned.
It really doesn't have anything to do with this particular one, but...
It still can't be leaned until it's paid. So if we're disputing a bill, it could sit there.
Here Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Yes, and in this particular case, the check was written 6/29. And I think it was recorded in 7/17 is when it was. So this one was recorded very quickly. But yes, some of those can go for years with the hospital bills that we don't actually incur them until, I mean, we've got, they've got some that are still eight years out that the hospitals haven't finalized.
I have a motion and a second to remove the applicant from the lien and leave it solely against the ex-wife. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I think though that this was a topic we should revisit. The idea of expediting the posting of these liens. And we should do whatever we can to make it correct as soon as possible because it's not that often that it happens. But even, you know, as often as it does happen is too often.
Okay, and this is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda, if you would give your name and address and limit your comments. I don't see anybody, so we'll move on to regular business. Item number two is, 10, excuse me, is consider a motion to authorize the advertising and bidding of the Manyaha County Midway Corner to improve the roadway and drainage conditions. DJ Boothey. Good morning, DJ.
Good morning Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent, bringing you this agenda item today because it is outside of our purchasing policy guidelines for department authorization that we approved earlier this year. This is a bid request for a project that is unbudgeted for the fiscal year 2016. We had some extra funds for construction projects that were not spent because of some good bids that we had this year. And this is a project that we've had kind of on our radar the last couple of years. And we did an in-house design project to do some improvements on Midway Corner just east of the state highway right there. The improvements that we're doing are, on the north side of the roadway, there's a lot of drainage issues and so we're improving the ditch. And then on the south side of the roadway, that's, the right-of-way is basically paved right there for access in and out of all and oil. And so we're tearing a lot of that pavement out. We're regrading it to provide for better drainage. And then we're paving a lot of the pavement back in there with concrete to provide for better drainage and better access in and out of the property. We did take care of a lot of access management issues already there on the south side of the road by installing some bollards, and those will remain in place. And so, the project that we have put together was a little bit outside of the scope of what our own construction crews or maintenance crews would normally do. And so we would like to bid this out for contracted work. And we're estimating it to be probably around $130,000, of which we can cover with our leftover construction dollars for this year. So, just looking for your approval today to advertise for the project and we'll bring it back for a bid award after we open bids.
Commissioner Kelly?
DJ, is this part of the reconstruction in 115 too?
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not? So the state has no involvement in this at all?
The state doesn't have any involvement. They did do their own project in that same area to take care of some of the similar issues in the state right-of-way, but with our adjoining right-of-way, they stayed away from that.
Commissioner Bender?
DJ, can you just explain how you had extra dollars and how you prioritize this project over other projects that you might have on your...
Sure. We had quite a, I think, close to a million dollars of leftover money. After we bid all of our projects in 2016, we had a lot of extra money that we had budgeted for those projects, but we didn't have to use. And so, we took a look at several different projects and, in particular, this one because it had a lower construction cost. We had already done the majority of the design in-house with our own staff and so we had plans ready to go. It's later in the construction season and so trying to hire an engineer to design a new project and get that out for bids and constructed this year is probably not very feasible. And so this was basically a shovel-ready project that we had ready to go. We're also going to be looking at doing an additional project for culvert replacement yet this fall. We're just not ready to come to request permission for that yet. But that's another one that we're looking at prioritizing to get done yet this year with the construction dollar savings that we had.
Okay. Additional questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, DJ.
Thanks.
Item number 11 is consider a resolution to establish boundaries of the Hartford Area Industrial Park Road District.
Good morning Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And this is a repeat of a thing that we tried to get done here a couple of weeks ago. And we believe that we've provided the other documents. And the main ones that we've provided here today are the requirements of SDCL 6-16-2 set forth. Number one, the name of the proposed road district. Number two, we demonstrated a need for improvements in roadwork in the territory described. Number three, a legal description of the proposed area to become a road district. Number four, the request that the Board of County Commissioners define the boundaries for the district, that a referendum be held within the territory so defined on the question of a road district in the territory, and that the Board determine such a district be created. And number five, a stamped, signed surveyor's map revised more inclusive area of the area described. I'm available for questions and I'd also advise you that Mr. Chris Healy, who's the lawyer for the road district, is also present and would like to make some comments.
Are there any questions for Bob? Are there any questions for Mr. Healy? I don't see any. Mr. Healy, did you have some comments? Would you just give your name and your address, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Chris Healy. I'm the attorney for the petitioning road district. I would like to add one note. We are requesting two actions be taken by the Board today. There is an existing road district in this same area that petitioners are in, and it's item six in the petition. The name of that district is the Brower Road District and we would ask that the Board move to resolve or dissolve that district. And then we would ask that the Commission also vote to approve the new Hartford Area Industrial Park Road District, which is depicted on the map.
Okay. There's some questions? Kirsten?
Under what statute is the dissolution of this, by this Board authorized upon petition? Is that something that's by operational law or is that part of the election that's going forward?
There is no statutory mechanism to dissolve that defunct district. I think inherent in the ability to approve the district is to dissolve this entity that's really never been utilized in the area. It's just simply on the books. There are no officers. And so we're asking, along with the approval of the new district, simply as a house cleaning matter, to dissolve the existing district.
There's a resolution, I don't know if you've seen that Kirsten Resolution, Manyaha County Resolution, MC07-20.
Yep. I guess I'm looking at the statutes on dissolution of a road district and I'm just unclear as to whether just your action can dissolve that. I hate to bring it up at this point, but are you asking that it's contingent on the successful election here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. All right. And we, I can work with the Auditor's Office to make that a part of the election if the Board requires.
And if I may, I mean, your role here is to assure that the chapter requirements have been adhered to at this point and authorized the election. The effect of the election, I think what Mr. Healy is saying, the effect of the election would essentially, if successful, dissolve it by operation there. So I just wanted to clarify that point, that just your vote today wouldn't be dissolving it. I think we're on the same page now. Sorry. Okay.
So we could have a motion that would dissolve the road district, let's see, a motion to dissolve the road district contingent on the success of the election? Or we don't even need to...
No, I wouldn't even include that.
Yeah, just a motion.
Yeah. To accept the application and authorize the Auditor to set it for a special election. Or, yeah.
That's my motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other questions?
Sorry.
That's a good motion. Commissioner Barth?
Make a comment. I did get an email from Jesse Fonker, the Hartford Area Economic Development Person, who could not be here today. I see that Nick Fosheim is here from Makita. And truly, this Brower subdivision, if brought up to shape, would be a jewel for industrial and commercial activity in our county and maybe one of the most important things that gets accomplished this year.
I'd also like to applaud the group that has worked on this. I've been here five and a half years and I've seen this many times and so I'm glad that they finally have figured out how to move it forward and I hope your elections are successful and that you actually are able to move forward and make improvements in this area. So, thank you for doing it and thank you for the Economic Development Group from Sioux Falls or the Makita that has worked with you, I'm sure tirelessly to get this moved forward. So, I have a motion and a second. Anything else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is consider a motion to authorize the Chairman to sign the food service, sign this food service and commissary agreement between Manyaha County and CBM Management Services. Oh, we have Mr. Milstead, Sheriff Milstead. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to just do a brief introduction and there's good cause for that, I think. I almost wish I could find Carol Tweed and a few others to be here. Nineteen years ago, the Shinaha family came before the Manyaha County Commission as small business operators in our community and wanted to get into the business of food service and correctional facilities. And our Commission thought long and hard. They'd never done it before. There were businesses out there that that's all they do. But the Commission took a chance. And nineteen years later, I'm here before you recommending that you extend their contract again up to five additional years. And it has been a very successful partnership. The interesting thing about that meeting, and there's probably nobody here that was there other than a few of us in the room, is that when they presented their, when they made their, you know, when they made their plea, basically, the whole family sat in the front row. And Marlin Senior's missing, but the whole family came today. And that's the kind of business they are. And maybe they'll touch on the fact that they're major employers, not only in our community, but also across the nation now, in the business that they provide. And with that, I'd like to just introduce Marlin Junior, Marlin Shinaha Junior, and maybe he can introduce the people that he's brought with him. And then Warden Gromer is going to come up and give you some of the specifics of the contract that we're asking you to approve.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Marlin Shinaha. I'm the President and CEO of CBM Managed Services. As Mike said, we're very proud to be before you today. Again, my name is Marlin. I have my brother Dustin, my brother Shane, my sister Valerie, my sister Amber, my sister Stephanie, and my mom, and of course, the memory of our father, Marlin Senior, who's not here today, but he's here with us in spirit and very proud, I'm sure. And of course, Darrell Lindert is our CFO and Jason Headley is our Controller. Darrell functions as our family's black hat, for those of you that understand the need for a black hat in a family business. You know, we couldn't be more proud of our company and our county and the community that we live in. We, as Mike said, we stood before you some nineteen years ago with no experience. And we did however, have the low bid by half a penny. So we did our homework around the table. It's a story that we tell often. And the more successful we are across the country, realize that it's because of where we started and the people that supported us. Manyaha County gave us a chance, our first jail. We stood before you with a half a penny difference between us and a national competitor. Some of the Commissioner, you know, many of the Commissioners were very excited. One Commissioner said, as I recall, "I know they beat the, they're the low bid, however, they have no experience." And another Commissioner pointed out and said, "Look at them. There are all of them here in the front row wringing their hands out. They're nervous. We're going to give them a chance." And on that day, I came before you and said, "If you give us a chance, we won't embarrass you. We'll work hard for Manyaha County and we'll be here down the road and prove our worth." Since that time, our company has grown from Manyaha, the opportunity, to over 250 facilities, 32 states, nearly 50 million meals. And we serve some of the largest correctional facilities in the United States. Chicago's Cook County with 12,000 beds, Detroit, St. Louis, New Orleans, and again, approximately 250 facilities across the country. It all happened because Manyaha County gave us a chance. They gave us a chance. And we had, and so I want to thank the county, the Commissioners for believing in us. Mike Milstead and his group, he was tough, you know? He had solid expectations on how we take care of these inmates and feed them to the letter of the law, and we do. And the one thing that we do differently that has allowed our company to continue to grow is there's a face to our company. And all of them are in here today. And we're responsive, we're hands-on, and we deliver the kind of service that you would expect us to deliver being a Manyaha County family and residents of Sioux Falls and the surrounding area. So, we're very proud to be here today. We've done the very best we could with the opportunity you gave us. And so, we say thank you. We're proud to have put forth our bid for the next five years. And again, the difference between us and our competitors is you can call me today or call any of us and we'll take care of it. If there's an issue with a meal, if there's an issue with something, we'll take care of it. We're hands-on and we look forward to being here another 20 years. So, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. Jeff Gromer, I'm the Warden at the Jail.
We weren't clapping for you.
I just have to recommend we accept the contract. That's pretty easy. I'll just chime in. CBM, of all the vendors and services that we deal with, CBM is by far and away the easiest to deal with. When there is problems, which are very, very rare, they're easily resolved. It's a couple of phone calls and the problems are taken care of. I think by the nature that they were the only vendor to submit a bid really shows how ingrained they are in our facility and the services that they offer because I think it's very difficult for anybody else to come in and compete with that.
Questions, comments, motions?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
Being the Senior Commissioner on this panel right now, even though I'm not the oldest, excuse me, I just want to say that...
What a cheap shot.
I didn't mean you, Gerald. I just know that when I first came on board and when these contracts came up that all of my fellow Commissioners that I served with in those days were also grateful to CBM for their efforts. And I, you know, whether it's Carol Tweed or Jim Zweep, who actually left when I came on board, you guys have always been near and dear to us. And the fact that you're such a success story for our county, for our community, I cannot overstate that. Thank you for what you do.
Was there a motion in that?
Yeah, I'm still waiting for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this contract.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
The only thing that I would say to the family is the difference between a dream and an enactment is actually doing it and meeting your goals, meeting your objectives, and making things happen because lots of people have dreams, but not many of them succeed because frankly, they're not able to implement. You guys have done that, obviously, so congratulations.
It would have been interesting to see you right up that first bed around the kitchen table or wherever it was because that had have been huge, huge. I have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you and go cook some more. Item number 13 is consider a motion to authorize the Chairman to authorize appointment of Johnson, Janklow, Ritter, and Parsons to represent Manyaha County in Civil Suit 16-1275, the appeal of the denial of the bridge improvement grant by the State of South Dakota Transportation Commission. Robert Wilson?
Good morning Commissioners. Robert Wilson again with the Commission Office. And our office requests that the Commission appoint Pamela Ritter and Ron Parsons as Special Deputy State's Attorneys for Manyaha County for the purpose of representing Manyaha County in the appeal of the denial of a bridge improvement grant by the State of South Dakota Transportation Commission. Commission Authorization also requests to sign the attached Attorney's Hourly Retainer Agreement with Johnson, Janklow, Abdallah, Ritter, and Parsons for the provision of Ms. Ritter and Mr. Parsons' services in the above-mentioned manner.
Madam Chair? I would make a motion to appoint those persons as Deputy State's Attorneys and authorize you to sign this contract.
Is there a second? A motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Is there an additional motion in there or not?
No, it was just one.
That is the whole thing, okay.
Item number 14 is Manyaha County Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports?
Commissioner Heiger? Yes. I'd just like to update everyone that we have our second meeting for the jail project focus group tonight. We had a lot of good questions submitted and the bulk of the meeting tonight will be to have the Sheriff's staff go over and answer the questions that were presented. I just really appreciate all the people who have taken the time to put work forward, to present a lot of questions, very thought-provoking. So I'm looking forward to another good night tonight.
We have a very good group attending this focus group project. Additional liaison reports? Gerald, did you want to say anything about our public defender meeting this morning or?
Oh, I don't know that I can add all the things that are still being discussed in that process. But we did meet this morning with Public Defender's Office and Southeast Area Behavioral Health, individuals who may give us the opportunity to provide social work support of that office with...
provide social work support of that office with frankly, no cost to the county at this point, because they have, uh, alternative resources that we don't have, and are able to support people who need direction and, uh, may avoid the whole process of mental health or drug-related issues and the court systems that have to deal with that. So, um, we're just getting started in that conversation, but it looks extremely promising, and I think there's, uh, some dramatic results that can be had by the fact that that is a significant part of our judicial process.
And then I was gonna report on, um, the SDACC Board Meeting that Dick and I went to, um, this last week, and so, I actually made notes, 'cause there was quite a bit of stuff. Um, so we were in Pierre Wednesday night and Thursday, and our Thursday meeting, Marty Jackley spoke first, and he talked a lot about seventy, Senate Bill Seventy, and he said there's gonna be a task force, again, that's meeting soon, to discuss the probation and the parole grids and the possibility of tightening up some of those things. He also talked about a program that's gonna be rolled out, I believe it's today. It's called SAVIN, S-A-V-I-N, and it's a victims notification operation. And if you want more information on that, you can look at the AG's website. We also had a lengthy conversation about Marcy's Law. I'm sure you've probably seen it out there. It's a constitutional amendment, um, and I'm thinking maybe we could have Aaron or somebody from the State's Attorney's Office speak about this in the next week or two. But basically, the conversation was, um, you know, they really don't need a constitutional amendment for Marcy's Law. We maybe, might need some legislative changes, but we are doing a lot with this new SAVIN program, and, um, there's concerns that it's Marcy's Law, which is a California bill and funded by California billionaire and brought into the State of South Dakota, that this might not be the best direction for the State of South Dakota to, to go. And I'll leave that and let, uh, maybe Aaron or somebody from his office talk about that at a later date. Um, the discussion at our, um, at our meeting this last week was that possibly, um, a resolution would come out from the, um, Association opposing this bill, um, just because of the way it's written, so. Um, and we talked about a couple other, Marty talked about a couple other programs. One was called the Freshman Impact, and it's a reenactment of a crash at a school, and they, you know, at a school setting so that kids could see what it is. He said they had Sanford Hospital and the helicopters and everything involved. He said it had a huge impact to teach kids about drinking and driving and, and effects of drugs, but it was like a live scene happening at the school with the kids as, um, participants in it. Um, that's one program that they're working on. Another one that they'll be rolling out in January is called No Meth Ever, and it's a new program that'll be rolled off with a kickoff, and it's to educate kids on the front end and try to get kids, keep kids from, um, getting involved in, um, meth. Um, I think that, you know, we've all talked about the importance of education on the front end before we already get these kids or people started on drugs and alcohol. And then we talked some about drug court and the need to, um, funding it and the structures that, that it creates in the counties and to make sure you're keeping it structured, 'cause not everyone has a drug court in the State of South Dakota. And Darren Berquist spoke. Um, he talked about the National Multi-Mobile Freight Network, and he's asking for counties and requesting that we would, um, support a resolution, which we are gonna talk about more in depth next week at our County Commission Meeting. Basically, um, this network that the Fed, federal government is putting together designates highways across the State of South Dakota, and in South Dakota, there's huge pockets where they have not designated as part of the network. And without, um, expanding, we're gonna ask for an expansion, without expanding it, they're concerned that in future dates, there will be no money associated. Right now, there's no money associated, but as it moves forward, that there may be funding associated with this National Multi-Mobile Freight Network, and that we would miss out on all of the funding attached with that, because they've basically got like two roads or something. But I think next week, staff will have a map showing what, um, South Dakota, or the South Dakota DOT would propose and what has been proposed by the federal government. So, we'll talk more about that next week. And then we also talked briefly just about the big fund, um, the Bridge Improvement Grant, and they just said the money's been going out the door and contracts have been signed, and that they would be needing, meeting again soon to do some tweaking on their guidelines and rules and, um, take them to their commission to be considered for passing. And Jim Seward spoke, and he also talked about Senate Bill Seventy, and he gave some of the other side of what's happening with Senate Bill Seventy. He said there was elimination of the prelim hearings for Class One misdemeanor, which has saved over five million dollars so far in the State of South Dakota, and that sixty-eight-hundred cases have been eliminated because of Senate Bill Seventy. Um, he talked about increasing the parole reimbursement rates for housing from fifty dollars a day to seventy-five dollars a day. And he handed out a sheet to us, or a little booklet of us, that was the, um, two thousand thirteen P.U., South Dakota Criminal Justice Initiative Briefing, and I haven't had a chance to read it, but it looks interesting. It's short. If anybody else would like a copy, I'm sure we could get you one. Um, and he also talked about a program that's being, um, used in the Fifth Circuit. Judge Myron up there piloted this program. It's called HOPE, and, um, it has now been, um, the state has given permission for it to go beyond a pilot. It's working with drug and alcohol, uh, drug, drug offenders in jail, um, to keep them out. And, um, they said it's going very well in the Fifth Circuit, and they're pretty excited about it, and so it might be something that we wanna look into is the HOPE program. And then we had somebody from UJS, Susie Kappas, and she said that they, um, the UJS is working on an indigent defense protocol, and I said that Minnehaha County had worked on one, and I asked her or suggested that she would call staff and find out what type of work we'd already done on that program. So, I think we'll probably be hearing from them. And then we talked about resolutions, and I'll talk a little bit about what I heard, and then Dick's gonna talk about what they talked about on Friday as far as resolutions. Um, the reimbursement to counties for incarceration on waiting for their pre-sentence evaluations. Marty Jackley spoke on that ahead of time on that resolution, and he says DOC has nothing to do with the pre-sentence investigations that are prepared for the judges, but he did suggest that, um, that we have a legislative action that would set a time limit or a restriction as to how long before those PSAs could be completed, and he did acknowledge that there is an issue with those taking a long time. So, we had a fairly good conversation about that. Um, the two-year study on state standards, when we had Susie Star Kappas there, Commissioner Kelly brought that up to her, and, um, she said that their office would be a good fit to look at those standards, and, um, I think she was gonna move forward with that, or at least ask questions to move forward on that. She also talked about the Rural Attorney Recruitment Program, and I think we heard about it a couple of years ago when it got started, and that has been very successful in some of the smaller counties. Um, and the, the last resolution was encouraging the state to continue with Medicaid expansion. In December of two thousand fifteen, the Association sent a letter to the Governor, um, saying that we were in support of Medicaid expansion, and it was signed by the Association President. And I believe they gave us a copy of that, although I didn't have it with me. I'm pretty sure we saw a copy. We also talked about the convention, which is here in Sioux Falls on September twelfth and thirteenth, so hopefully, there's no excuse for anybody to miss. Um, we will have the President of NACO, Brian Deloge, will be there to speak. Amelia Estrada, I think is how you say her name, she is a, she's Dr. Amelia Estrada, and she's the Director of Research and Outreach for NACO, and she will be just talking about, um, ways that we can use NACO in our communities across the State of South Dakota. And then also Elliot Eisenberg, who is a national economist, who has a daily blog that maybe some of you get, um, and he will also be speaking. So, there's a very good lineup of speakers, and I think it'll be a great convention, and I encourage you all to go, so. Questions or additional, I guess Commissioner Kelly has a little more on resolutions.
On Friday, we had a phone conference meeting with the, on the resolutions. They decided rather than hold us over the, and have those people drive in from other areas that it'd be easier to do on the phone. Basically, and I think, uh, pretty much the, the Board ahead of the day before, um, none of the resolutions were really adopted. Um, the, the Conservation District won, uh, it's kinda leave a sleeping dog lie, they decided, that, uh, it's, it's not being used, and, and, uh, it's there. Couple counties use, do it, but, uh, rather than, rather than just, uh, just go on with this thing and let it, let it be as it is, has been in the past. So, that resolution will come before the Board. I'm not sure how we go in there with, uh, uh, recommend to not do it, or we just table it. Um, second one on the, on the policy of the, um, Pilt, the payment in lieu of taxes. Uh, again, um, that was a Bennett County deal. Bennett County has a real serious problem. Uh, I think sixty-five percent of their land is, is, uh, federal lands. They, they really have very little tax base, they're, they're still financially teetering in this thing, but, um, that's a federal deal. Uh, I guess we just encourage, it's in our, it's in our, uh, uh, policy statement already that we support the Pilt and continue, and, and I think Governor Ra, or Senator Rounds has probably been more active in this thing, probably because of his years as Governor, and I think he understands that problem. Uh, the state reimbursement to counties, um, that was really, uh, the attitude of the, of both the Board and the Resolutions Committee is that we have had pretty, two, two or three pretty successful years up there in Pierre, and this is not the time to be going in and asking for more money. However, the, and even, uh, Jim Stewart kinda indicated that they might support a deal, a, a bill that does put a time limit that says within six minutes, six weeks or something like that, and that'll be brought to the convention. But, um, as far as the payment part of that thing, uh, that's kind of a no-go. The study on the public defender deal, uh, and I was unaware and I, of the, uh, Chief Justice having a group going, and so if we can just go alongside that, again, that was deferred, uh, we'll get some more information, so that coming to the convention, it'll, uh, it'll be brought up again at the convention. The Medicaid expansion is already a policy, and I, I apologize, I can't remember whether we were gonna write another letter, there was a letter written last year, or whether we're gonna reinforce the fact that we still believe, we're still supporting the Medicaid expansion. Um, so, it, and the question at the end was, well, what's Bob Wilcox gonna do this year then? So, yeah, I, I said he's gotta, uh, he's gotta make friends with a lot of new legislators and become real good friends with them, but, uh, I think our attitude's improved up there. I think the Board thinks it's improved significantly. Uh, one other comment, um, I'm on the Resolutions Committee. Obviously, I won't be here after December thirty-first. I think it's important that, uh, Minnehaha County keep, try and keep somebody on that Resolutions Committee. We're, I don't know, when's the district meeting next week? They're coming up pretty quick. Uh, at that point, it's where they'll probably reappoint, otherwise, they may not reappoint until January meeting, but I, I think it's important that this county have somebody on the Resolutions Committee. I think it's, it's effective when somebody's there as opposed to either staff people or sending in requests, so, uh, think about that. The other thing is, uh, also, I'm serving as a Southeast District Rep, and that effectively gives us two people, not, not the, because the Southeast District, it, we're a statewide organization, but it still does, that Southeast also allows us still to have the Commission, Cindy's position. So, again, think about, uh, who'd be interested in that, what you can do, and if I don't do anything, I think probably nothing will happen till after the, till the first meeting in seventeen. But, be thinking about it. I think it's been effect, I think it's been good for us having me on the Resolutions Committee, 'cause I think we were able to get a seat at the table and a little more discussion, uh, in, than we have had in past years, and you know how we kinda felt like we were left out in the cold before, so. Uh, other than that, uh, it was a good Board meeting. I think, uh, both Jackley and Stewart, uh, really, th, this drug problem is really serious. Uh, heroin's getting, heroin's coming in, it's cheaper than meth, it's, it's, uh, it's extremely dangerous when they're, when they're mixing it with some other stuff, but, uh, it, it's not an issue that we can take lightly at all, so.
Also mentioned that I had Melinda pass out to you our budget, that's, so that's the sheet that's lying here that doesn't say whose budget is, it's the Association's budget.
Madam Chair? I'd just like to make a comment here. You know, I, I really have some concerns about a couple of these items, uh, to include Senate Bill Seventy, which, uh, I don't think is, uh, is living up to the expectations we were, uh, led to believe. You know, I, I sort of feel like these, uh, folks touting how wonderful it's doing is a little bit like, uh, when our previous president declared, uh, mission accomplished. Mission is not accomplished. Senate Bill Seventy has not delivered, uh, uh, what, what was promised. Uh, and certainly, our, we're better at lacking up people today, but they, we let 'em go and they continue to offend. Um, you know, if you, uh, blow a hot test, if you test hot for methamphetamines day after day, you don't go back to prison. You're back on the street, and that's not what I think we want. So, I, I really, uh, you know, people say, uh, figures lie and liars figure. I, it's more than numbers that we have to talk about here. It's, it's actual, the final result. Then I'd just like to touch on Marcy's Law, which I think was perpetrated on us in a sense, uh, to suck people into signing the eighteen percent, uh, constitutional amendment, because the paid circulators that carried that, paid circulators from outer, out of state who carried the eighteen percent thing to protect the payday loan people, uh, they, they got you sucked in by saying, "Do you wanna sign, protect victims with Marcy's Law?", and then they'd say, "Oh, and by the way, how about signing this eighteen percent thing?", which is another example of, uh, disguising the true, uh, thing. I, uh, I very much regret that, uh, these out-of-state millionaires on both sides of those two issues have brought those things forward. You, you look at our situation with crime in Minnehaha County. When people are robbed of all their earnings by their payday loan, uh, uh, sharks, uh, they have no choice but to turn to crime, and that's what we're seeing. We need better jobs. We don't need predatory lenders, uh, and, uh, certainly, uh, using the Marcy's Law as a disguise to get you to sign, uh, some other baloney. So, anyway, those are two issues I just wanted to mention.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bender?
I'd just like to, um, and I can maybe comment about this again, and, and when Aaron McGowan comes to speak on Marcy's Law, you might bring this up as well, but, um, I would agree specifically on Marcy's Law that, um, it is a, it's gonna be a real challenge for the public to understand. Um, it's one of those bills that sounds very attractive, who doesn't wanna protect, you know, the rights of victims? Um, but, you know, at the State Bar of South Dakota, when all the attorneys were present in one room, um, they voted unanimously, except for the one person who's proponing that's paid to promote this bill, they voted unanimously against Marcy's Law, because the folks that understand and work every day in the judicial system, both on the side of defendants and on the side of prosecutors, understand that, um, you know, this is a bill chasing a problem. There's not really a problem here in the state. There's, um, that's certainly nothing that couldn't be tweaked by legislature or by the SAVIN program, and to get a whole roomful of lawyers to agree on anything is nothing short of a miracle, and so I think that sets a very strong statement, um, about the, the issues related to that.
And, um, we'll just let staff contact the State's Attorney's Office and see who we can get to talk to us next week. I think this is very important. There's not a lot of time, and we need to be good stewards of our positions and make sure we're educating people. I'm seeing it on Facebook regularly, that it's wonderful, and I think, you know, our side is not getting the word out that this is not a good bill for the State of South Dakota, so.
This is a constitutional amendment, too, and I think, I think if you run into somebody, even though the victim's rights sounds good, and I, I mean, it is, I, uh, one, the problem isn't in South Dakota, but two, it's a constitutional amendment, and, and that, that's a very, very serious situation. So, you know, if it, if it has unintended consequences, uh, to get it changed would be very, very difficult, so. But, uh, the polls are showing something like seventy percent support based on what people know, which is very little about it.
I think it's lack of understanding, so. Um, any other liaison reports? That, is there any new business? Any old business? For a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel, potential litigation, and legal briefings?
With contract negotiations.
And contracts negotiations.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.